All right, it is after 3:00 and we're going to start the study session. Commissioner Lenkowitz is-
Is on vacation.
Vacation. Commissioner Ryan may be here soon.
I believe so. I can't recall that he told me otherwise.
All right, so we will, or he may be watching on TV, never know. We're going to talk about preliminary financial update. This says 2021, should that be '22?
No.
So the 21 budget, last year's carrying over.
Last year's results from actual financials.
Oh, all right.
Yep.
That's right, because of all the data. I just happened to notice the number on there. Is there any introductions?
Not a whole lot. This is a recap of 2021's performance and I've had a few of you say you've looked at the information and what are the takeaways that you should be seeing in there and Debbie will be sure to point those out as she goes, so.
I'll try anyway.
A lot of topics to cover. You'll see that it kind of sinks back to the strategic planning conversations we've had before in terms of categories that we cover and report on, so I'll turn it over to Debbie.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, Debbie Peck, Director of Finance. As you can see, this is the preliminary financial update. I just wanted to explain that. We have not completed our audit, so at this point, that's why we call it preliminary. The numbers, most of the numbers are in, but there can always be changes when the auditors come in and they find something that might need to be moved or something that was missed or something like that. That's why we still call it preliminary financial results. So today, basically what we're going to do, we'll spend a lot of time on the general fund. As you know, the general fund is the major operating fund for the city. It entails administration, which is our HR, our city commission, parks and rec, all of those types of services. It also includes public safety, which police and fire, public works, our engineering, our streets departments. So we'll, we talk about this fund a lot. It's typically funded by property tax, a lot of sales tax and things like that, but typically when we talk about financials, we'll talk about this fund the majority of the time because this is where most of our cost comes in and out of for the operations of the government. So as I mentioned, the general fund does cover a wide variety of services provided by the city. On slide three, I have presented what we have for the preliminary financials for the general fund. The columns that I will point out to you for recognition are, the first column is the actual performance of 2021. As it shows, we had a little over $40, $45 million in revenue, a little over $39 million in expenditure with a net income of $5.7 million. If you go to the right of that, you can compare that to what we did in 2020 when we had about $43 million in revenue, about $37 million in expenses and still had about $5.9 million in revenue. The column that I like to really compare to though is in the last box on the right-hand side, that last square box, the first column where it says 2021 original budget. This is where we thought we would be when we taught, we started talking about 2021 in May of 2020. As you know, we budget a year, you know, the year before we actually get to things, so we're trying to figure out based on information from 2019 what's going to happen in 2021. COVID hits, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty at that time. So at that time, this is what we thought would happen. In 2021, we thought we'd have revenue of about $44 million, expenses of about $43.6 million and a net revenue of only $491,000. That's typically where we like to stay because we want to, we want to make sure we're providing you a budget, a balanced budget, but we're still growing that general fund. And then when you look at the last column in that box on the very right-hand side, you can see what kind of causes these differences. In the top section, if you look at those numbers, anything that's a positive is over budget. For example, sales tax came in, we budgeted $13.4 million. Actual sales tax came in at $15.3 million, which was about one, almost $1.9 million over what we originally budgeted. And then you can go down that to the expense side. When you get to the expense section down in the lower part of that box, you can see that we budgeted $28.2 million in personnel expenses and we came in about $26 million, which was about $2.2 million under budget on the expense side. So this kind of gives you a big picture of, to be able to compare to what we did the previous year, to be able to compare to what we thought we were going to do in 2021 and then kind of compare all those numbers to each other. Then we have to kind of look at, everybody says, well, how did, how did that happen? So if you switch over to the next slide, Jacob. As I mentioned, sales tax came in about $1.8 million over budget and kind of how, how we kind of got to where we budgeted was, we were using 2019 numbers. At that point, that was the only number we had that was concrete. We, we were being very conservative because at that point, we didn't know what COVID was going to do. We were in May, June of 2020, so we, we used the 2019 actuals to kind of look at where we thought we'd come in at, at sales tax. We actually collected 12% more revenue in sales tax than we actually did in 2019. Our, our normal growth rate in sales tax is about 2%. We actually collected 11.5% more than we did in 2020. And we knew in 2020, we were going to be not really sure where we were going to end up, but we did end up collecting about 11.5% more in 2021 than we did in 2020 for sales tax. On the personnel side, we budgeted using 2019 numbers, adding 5% based on our, the knowledge that we knew, we had two years of growth in there with both COLAs and merit increases, so that's why we added 5%. We actually came in about 2.8% below what we actually spent in 2019 on personnel services. Some of the graphs that I have on the next slide can kind of explain a little bit about that. And the other big one was contractual services where we came in under budget at about $1.2 million. This one's kind of weird, but if you remember the whole story about OCCK, we normally support them at about, a rate of about $900,000 a year. During COVID, the Department of, the Kansas Department of Transportation, instead of supplying, instead of supporting them at 50%, were, were, had chosen to support them at 100%. So part of 2020, they supported them at 100%. And when we budgeted this, we thought they were going to do that all, until June of 2021 and they decided to extend that to the end of 2021. So our, our contribution to OCCK, which was much less than we anticipated, both in 2020 and in 2021. And the actual, the refund that we got back from OCCK was actually booked in 2021, so that kind of double affected 2021. So that's why we're at a one, about a $1.2 million savings or under budget number in contractual services. The next slide that was provided by HR, this kind of goes back to that personnel savings. If you look at this slide, it's kind of busy, but really what it's showing us is how many active employees did we, do we have by month for the past about seven or eight years. So you can see we're pretty level and then when we get to 2020, we drop off significantly. Basically due to COVID, we went through work share. But we're finding, what we're finding in 2021 is our vacancy rates are very high still. So that's why a lot of our, our savings in personnel is because we just have a lot of vacancies. We don't typically budget, we budget for some vacancies, but we don't budget for the numbers that we were seeing in 2021.
Ms. Peck, I have a quick question on this, on page four, on the sales tax.
Sure.
What impact is the new internet sales that we're collecting have on that?
We are seeing that percentage go up as far as a percentage because that's considered use tax, but the dollar value is very small. So it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars as opposed to the $10 million that we see from sales tax. So we'll see, that number may go up like 16%, but it may only be like $50,000 a year. So the dollar amount is very low, the percentage is very high. So we are seeing some impact from that.
Which before, when did we start receiving any of that at all? Was 2000?
It was about the fall of 2019 when the, the state kind of started pushing those initiatives to really start, one, enforcing sales tax in general upon retailers and enforcing those use tax online sales.
And then one other question, we collected 11% higher on sales and use tax in 2021 than 2020, which is probably surprising to us because if I remember when we budgeted, we felt with all the stimulus money, we might have peaked and that might drop. What, is there a certain sector that that went up in that?
I believe we're still seeing a great, a large increase in retail. I don't recall off the top of my head what specific within retail that we're seeing that in. Car sales are still up a little bit and we are seeing accommodations go back up a little bit, I believe.
Transit.
Yeah.
You know, pre-COVID, the conversation we had was the Schwan's project in particular and some of our economic development projects, we knew were going to bring in construction workers and at the point that they were working on that project and they made the statement at one time that when they got, they tilt up concrete walls up, they were going to be bringing in 400 laborers. And so as we look at sales tax, some of the categories that are seeing the increases do seem to correspond with the potential of contractors being in the community. Again, don't know how extended that might be.
So I guess based on that, when we go to do our next budgeting process, we're, we're still a little bit in limbo as to what our benchmark maybe should be?
Yes.
Okay.
And then factor in inflation in the war economy and yeah.
Yeah, and we'll actually get into that when we get to the sales tax specifically because we'll go through some of the more specific revenues within the general fund. So then on the next slide, just I wanted to keep in the back of our mind, when we were going through this during strategic planning last year, we have basically committed about $2 million out of the general fund for some of these back-of-house items. So we still are keeping that in the back of our heads so that, that these things are coming in 2022 so that we don't think we have that extra additional funding for other items. So we still have those on the list to, to complete and to bring forward. And then on slide seven, this is really a breakdown of how we, how the general fund gets its revenue by type. So as you can see, we, we collect about, in 2021, we collected about 35% of our revenue from sales and use tax, 24% from property tax and the remainder from other miscellaneous fees and franchise fees and et cetera. And if you, if you've ever talked to anybody about revenue, you've heard this three-legged stool approach where you want a third of your, for a government, you want a third of your taxes to come from sales tax, a third from property tax. And then if you have income tax, that's typically the other third. Since we don't, that other third is kind of those other fees. So for us, we need to, we need to kind of be thinking about how do we balance this out? We don't want to become too dependent on sales tax because it's so uncontrollable. You know, we have no control over what people are spending. So we just, we need to just keep that in the back of our mind, that we don't want to have a huge dependence on sales tax because it is uncontrollable for us. Property tax, on the other hand, can be limited by the tax-led legislation where it's, it's making us that we can't increase our revenues unless we go out for, send notifications and hold public hearings. So those are just some things to, to keep into consideration as we think about moving forward in the budget process.
I got a question.
Sure.
Debbie, has there been any further updates on the legislature concerning the sales tax, food, on, sales tax on food?
Mike can probably step into that, but I don't think it's gone anywhere.
I've not heard anything recently.
You know, what I've seen most recently is they've kind of backed off a little bit because of that apex funding legislation, wanting to see whether that's necessary and they may forego some of those, those tax decreases this year to see how that plays out, but that's still all up in the air.
Legislation doesn't close till the end of May.
They'll probably run that up to the end of the legislature.
There's a good chance of that.
Yes, yes. So and, and we will be in the budget process at that time, so we'll know for, we should by that time, what effect that would have on us. And it could have a dramatic effect on our sales tax collections. I don't remember, but I think, Mike, I told you it was like $4 million in grocery sales was our estimate?
Yeah, I think we said it was four mil in terms of the mil rate. Yeah, it was like 12 to 15% of our sales tax revenue.
Yeah, yeah. So it could have a huge effect. And then the other thing we look at on the expenditure side on slide eight is, as you can see, including benefits, about 75% of the general fund expenditures are human resources. So it's the, the cost of employees to run the services, to provide the services for the city. The other ones break down pretty small contractual services, which is typically utilities or if we have to hire out, something like that, that comes in at 16%. And then breaking it down by function, on the next slide, about 54% of our expenditures for the general fund are in public safety. In this particular scenario, that includes police, fire and municipal court. 17% is general government, which is those overhead, human resources, computer technology, city commission, city manager, finance, those types of development services, those types of services. Parks and recreation is about 13% and public works is about 10.6%. So it just kind of gives you a good idea where the majority, how we spend the money that, that we're being asked to, to take care of. So now what we'll do is we'll go through some of these top revenues just to see kind of what they're doing, how, you know, how we are anticipating will, to kind of answer Commissioner Hoppe's question, how do we move forward with looking at our budget for 2022? Sales and tax, sales and use tax, and this is only the portion that goes into the general fund. The city of Salina actually has a 1.25% sales tax rate. Of that 0.5%, of that 1.25% goes to the general fund. 0.75% goes into the sales tax capital fund. We also collect from the county a portion of the county sales tax and that's determined by your property tax and your population. And ours, ours stays right around about 60%. It fluctuates between 60.1 and 60.4, so it stays right around 60% of the county's collection comes back to the city on, for their, part of their sales tax. That does not include the new sales tax that they just levied, that is specifically for the jail, so that we won't see, we wouldn't see any increase for that particular portion of their, so if we thought that they increased it, we're not going to see that from the county, that's specifically for the jail. So that, that graph on here shows you kind of where our sales tax was over the last 10 years and you can see it, it was pretty flat, it's going up. It's a little hard to tell how much it's gone up, but back in 2012, we were collecting about $12 million in sales and use tax in the general fund and we're up to about $15.3 million in 2021. And you can see the trend on that shows that it's going up, but like we talked about, we don't know how much. The next slide on slide 11, I'm showing you the, the percentage of growth. So as we can see over the years, it kind of goes ebbs and flows. The, the intake, the uptick from 2016 to 2017 was when we increased our sales tax back in October of 2016, so that accounts for a big portion of that increase. We can see where it kind of went down, went up, and now we can see that significant growth in 2021, which was about 11% growth. As Mike mentioned earlier, some of the possible reasons for this growth could be that enforcement from K-Door where they're trying to enforce not only sales tax collections at the retail level, but also enforcing those sales tax collections on the, online. We know there's a lot of stimulus money out there that, that people have to spend since the, you know, mid-2020. There's child tax credits and all those dollars that are out there. We know there's, there's a lot of construction in Salina, so there's a lot of construction workers in Salina. And you have to keep into consideration, you know, inflation. When your, when your gallon of milk goes from $1.50 to $3, you're paying sales tax on $3. So we can expect that to go up with that, with that inflation. Big question is how long will that growth last? We don't know. If we had a crystal ball, we would know, but we don't. And I think you just have to take into consideration, one, what the economy's doing, what the, the local government, the local economy's doing and things like that. So you just, you really have to just take a lot of those things into, into consideration. The next segment of revenue that we'll look at is property tax. As you can see, property tax is pretty flat, it's had a little bit of growth in the last few years, but it certainly isn't a huge dollar amount for us. And basically, property tax is based on your assessed valuation and your mil rate. So there's those two things that are taken into consideration. And if we take a look at the next slide, we show kind of how, what our mil rate's been doing. It's been increasing since 2018. And then our assessed valuation, the average growth over the past nine years, 10 years, it's been about 1.34%. And the next, there's a better slide coming up in two that I'll show you that I think really tells the big story about property tax. The next slide shows that actual growth in property tax by, by type of property. So property taxes is levied by real, on real estate, personal property, state assessed and oil and gas. And then within all that, we have to deduct out what the TIF district is getting. So as our property taxes are going up on real estate, so is the, the amount that's going to the downtown TIF. So it kind of washes some of that growth out because most, some of that growth is in downtown. The one thing I will remind you too here is that personal property tax, legislation went into effect in 2016, which no longer applies personal tax to personal property that was purchased after 2016. So we'll see that number continue to decline. As you can see, in 2017, we had a valuation of 17 million. In 2022, we had a valuation that was being taxed at $7 million. So we'll continue to see that number go down to basically zero eventually, probably. I don't know if it overgoes zero, but it'll go down. Machinery equipment for engineering and development.
At, at manufacturers and stuff too, so that's really had a major effect on our tax.
Right. So anything that Schwan's is putting in new equipment, none of that equipment will be taxed because the personal property tax is not applied to that purchase after 2016 on machinery and equipment for a commercial property.
Just to be clear, that's not all personal property, it's machinery and equipment?
Yes, just machinery and equipment.
Those are large ticket.
Those are the big ones.
I just don't want viewers at home to get overly optimistic that they're-
Yeah, sorry.
That's why it's put more of a strain on our, on our property tax base because we no longer collect that.
Right. We don't have that leveling out of, you know, we have a big portion from property tax and some from real estate. Now we have to depend more on the real estate side. And the next slide is on 15, kind of, it kind of tells a story where our growth's come from. You can see the, the two numbers that are fluctuating between the percent of growth of collection and the percent of growth of mil rate are almost identical. So as, we haven't had a lot of growth in assessed valuation, so as we've had the necessity to grow our revenue, we've had to grow our mil rate. So I think that's, that's kind of an important slide to see. And I think I mentioned this earlier, the tax lid. We, we will have to look at that again this year. We may not need to do anything with it. But as a reminder, the, the county will send us a mil levy rate that, based on the assessed valuation that they have currently for 2022, will provide us the exact same revenue that we collected in 2021 so that our revenue stays neutral. And then we'll have to make the, we, you will have to make the decision whether that we want to stay at that rate or we want to go below it or, or increase it at this point. And we'll have a lot of conversations about that during the, the budget process. The next highest revenue source is franchise fees. We do collect franchise fees anywhere between 5 and 6% from electricity, gas, cable, telephone, wireless, water. So this, this one shows you, it's pretty flat. Electric and gas are very dependent on weather, so we never know exactly where to put that number, but we, we kind of just look at the historical data and make sure that we're taking into consideration anything that's happening in those, in those particular industries, but it's, it's been pretty flat. And the next revenue source that we'll, we'll look at is interfund transfers. These are transfers from our enterprise funds into the general fund. They're for purposes such as overhead, to help pay the cost of human resources, finance. It's for computer technology, risk management, those types of services. They also pay a payment in lieu of taxes because as a government entity, they are not, they do not pay property tax on their properties. They, and they all pay some sort of franchise fee into the city. The next revenue source we'll look at is EMS revenue. And it's broken down by what, what the county and by different insurance providers. Blue Cross Blue Shield is one of our main ones, Medicare, Medicaid and then other insurance providers. You can see that we, we had some drop in that revenue in 2020. It was about the same in 2021. We'll just have, we'll be talking to the fire department and EMS providers to make, and to see kind of where they expect that number to go. It's dependent on the number of calls, it's depending on the rates that we can get from the different insurance companies, the rates we can get from Medicare, what their allowable rates are. So, so those numbers we'll, we'll take a look at a little bit further when we, we get into the budget process.
And COVID and COVID response decreased the overall number of calls, so. And starting in 2020, that's attributable to some of that decrease?
So then on the expenditure side, on slide 19, this gives you a kind of a clear picture of, of our expenses over the last eight or nine years based on personnel, employee benefits, contractual services. And you can see it's pretty obvious, employee services are the highest. They haven't fluctuated, they've fluctuated some, but not a huge amount. And pretty much the others are pretty flat because that's how we've required our, our departments to budget. We've required them to, to keep as flat as they could over the past five or six years. And you can see that that's really what's reflected on that slide. The next slide I just threw in here just because of personnel, just to show you kind of the historical increases that we've provided for our personnel, our human resources. There were many years in there, 2019 to 2015, where we didn't provide a, a merit increase at all. We had some COLAs in those years, but we've gone back and forth. In the past couple of years, we've tried to kind, we've been trying to kind of get that back to a normal level for our employees, but that, that does affect the cost of our personnel. So if our personnel's in the $20 million range in the, in the general fund, every increase that we see is going to have a huge effect on that general fund budget. Any questions on the general fund in that, that I've talked about so far? That's kind of all I'm going to talk about, the general fund. There's, the next fund we'll look at is the sales tax capital fund. This is another one that we, we talk about a lot. It's probably the second largest- It's probably the second largest use of dollars for the city. In the, in the sales tax capital fund, we use a lot of that, the dollar for economic development, capitals, a lot of capital spending, debt service payments. We have some, when, when we increased the debt service in 2016, we had some already existing debt that we had committed to, to help paying off with the sales tax. We've since added the downtown streetscape to that and the river renewal. So we have debt for those projects in here. Economic development, all of a sales tax capital fund, that 0.75% that I mentioned earlier that goes into the sales tax capital fund, 3.9% of that goes into the economic development fund, which is then set aside for some of that economic development to support S C E D O, S D I, and any other economic development projects that we might have that we, we try to fund. Tax stabilization was one of the promises we made to the citizens. So there is a, a transfer into the general fund for tax stabilization. And then again, we had, we have capital spending that, that was also in that initiative. We have Kenwood Cove maintenance. We have street improvements, park maintenance, hike, bike trails, building and facility improvements, vehicles and equipment, and then C I, there's a small amount set aside for C I P planning for things that we might need to do studies or something like that on. So the next slide shows how the sales tax capital. And you can assume that if the general fund had increased in sales tax collections, so did the sales tax capital fund. So that's why we can report that the, the positiveness that we can see in the sales tax general fund in that column, in the 2021 budget column, the third from the right. You can see we budgeted to have about a $750,000 net income. In the very first column on the left, you can see the actual ending number was about $2.5 million. All of that basically attributable to the increase in sales tax. We did have some underfund, we did not spend all of our funding in the sales tax that we had budgeted. A lot of that was in parks because we're still trying to figure out where we're going with those projects. So we, we, we did not spend a lot of that. All of the funding was spent that we had allocated to streets. So we're doing what we said we were going to do, but, but we did have some excess revenue in that fund. The next slide, again, strategic planning. We, we chose that, we, we had recognized at that point that as we allocate funds to particular projects. For example, this, a perfect example is this parks one in 2021. If they didn't spend that $390,000, what we saw was happening was it was staying in the fund and then somewhere else it would get eaten up. It would never go back to parks. So in 2021, as part of strategic planning, we recommended to you and you agreed that we would set aside those funds and we would transfer those funds to separate funds for each of those particular items so that if, if for some reason there was a small project this year, but there was a big project in two years, we could accumulate those funds and we'd be able to have that funding available when we needed it for a larger project. We could also, we could also say that we knew that those were, were being dedicated to those particular project types. So we did do that as part of the 22 budget. We have set up separate funds for parks maintenance, buildings and facilities, fleets, vehicles and equipment. And I don't remember the other streets. So that instead of all, instead of seeing all these expenses coming out of this fund in 2022, you'll see all, you'll see a transfer out of this fund that'll go to those other five funds. And we'll see expenses going out, coming out of that that we know are specifically to those types of expenses. It'll be much easier for you to understand. And we'll also know that we've dedicated those funds to those particular project types. We probably will have to have in 20, for 2021, another transfer because when we did this whole process, we went through 2020. And we can see that, we'll have to at least consider it, whether we're going to go back to 2021 and capture those savings for those particular funds too. So that'll be a conversation we'll have during the budget process coming up. So slide 23 shows you what those commitments were. So we, we have committed from sales tax to transfer about $1.5 million to the park reserve fund, $1 million to fleet management, which as I'll remind you is our leasing program for our fleet, streets maintenance, 550, building facilities, 600, and vehicles and equipment replacement reserve, about 500,000. So of that $8.3 million fund balance showing in that table, about $4.2 million is already set aside for these transfers out of that funding. The next slide shows you the special sales ta, we call it special sales tax collection history. That's that 0.75. And this is by month. And so I, I just wanted to show you this just for comparison purposes. So this is 2017, which is when we, our increase went into effect. Our collection would have gone into effect in 2017 compared to 2021. And of 12 months out of the year, seven months in 2021 were the highest that we've collected in the last five years. So that just gives you an idea of the collection rate that we were having in 2021, the, for that particular month. And sales tax is very cyclical. So what we collect in February is really what the retailer is selling in November and December. So that's their Christmas sale, their holiday sales. So we, we expect February to be a higher number. And so we can see those numbers kind of as a cycle in this. But I, I thought it was interesting that we have had the highest collection in 2021 as we've had in the past five years, in seven out of 12 months of the year. I thought that was just kind of pretty interesting.
So what do you attribute it to? People just spending more money or we're more regional, more people coming here?
Well, that goes back to.
Or inflation.
It's really hot, all, all of the above. We have, we believe that it's all the money that's out there, the stimulus money that people have. We believe that it, it's attributable to the economic development that's going in and around the town. It's just, you know, it's one of those things that you can't put your finger on. You can just assume that these different things that are happening are causing that to happen.
I just wonder, you know, are retailers reporting record sales?
They would have to be.
Do we get any data on that?
No.
I didn't think so.
Not to that individual level. The, with respect to people traveling into the community, that's commonly referred to as the pull factor. And, and I don't know that things have changed drastically to change those patterns. I think we've recovered from COVID in 2020 and kind of gotten back to normal. But a couple of the things that jump out to me in 2021 are those, you know, as Debbie said, you expect the Christmas bump to show up in February. But then there's a, two other spikes there in March and October that don't correspond to the prior years. Makes me think there was some activity in March and October that was unique, but what that is, I don't know.
Could be child tax credits. It could be, I mean, there's just a lot of things going on. I used to attribute, I used to always assume from the motor vehicle side that we were always going to see a bump in, in April and May because people were going to get their tax refunds and spend those on new cars. So I think that you, you can expect those things throughout the year. Things that are happening throughout the year to people's finances, you're going to see those in sales tax. But these are pretty incredible numbers that, that in 2021.
I guess one other thing, we did try to do some analysis a while back. And one particular year we saw a spike and in the end it turned, turned out to be a particular business paying their delinquent back taxes from prior years. So it wasn't really new revenue, it was just a catch up in that particular fiscal year.
Right. When we look at sales tax, we typically, we have so many things that we depend on the sales tax fund for that we've kind of created this next spreadsheet to kind of keep track of in our own head where our commitments are, where our revenues are, and kind of where we're going to end up so that we have some projection to make sure, especially that we are going to be able to fund what we've committed to the River Fest, or to the River Renewal and some of these other capital improvement categories. So the next two slides you'll see are that spreadsheet that kind of breaks out the commitments that we have to bonds, the River Renewal project, cap, debt projects, streets projects and things like that. And kind of what that does to the sales tax capital fund as a, on a projection basis. I will mention that when we, when we look at this particular spreadsheet, we typically are only projecting a growth of 0.5% because prior to 2020, our numbers weren't in the double digits. They were in the single 1%, 2% growth rates. So that's why we've been very conservative when looking at these numbers to make sure that the commitments that we're making from sales tax are, we're, we could comfortably know that we're going to have those funds available. Sales ta, this particular sales tax sunsets in 2036. So we don't, we're trying not to make commitments beyond that. And we're, you know, it's just a mech, this is just a mechanism for us to keep our hands around what we've committed and to make sure that that commitment can be fulfilled with the growth that we anticipate, with that smaller growth.
And I would add to that, until recently, if we were doing this, this calculation and these projections, and until recently, we didn't break even in year 2036. We, our, our fiscal management was, what are we going to do to meet all these obligations, carrying them forward and at least break even? So similarly, with all of our fund balances, general fund in particular, our conversation was focused around, we're not at our target balance. We were budgeting for some growth. We're not actually realizing that growth in any given year. As we want to fund a, a particular project or expense, are we brave enough to budget it and hope for the best? I think we are at least now in a position where we have some reserve balances. We can make some informed decisions about, and, and fund things with funds on hand. And the sales tax fund is looking a lot better than it, than it has in years past.
Yeah. So the next set of 10 or so slides, I'm not going to go through each one of them unless you have particular questions. I will stop at slide 29, which is tourism convention. That's the transient guest tax, supported by transient guest tax. I did show you kind of a, a historical collection on that. We all knew that we had significant drop in 2020 around COVID. It's starting to come back up in 2021. We did change that transient guest tax percentage. We won't recognize that collect, we won't get that distribution until 2022 because we're paid on a quarterly basis. We had a little bit in 2021, but the majority of it we won't see until 2022. So we won't see those numbers until we start reporting 2022 numbers to kind of compare that. Slide 31 is the Special Parks and Recreation Fund. We've, we talked a lot about that and its support of the tennis project. It's currently showing at 2021 a balance of about $245,000. Just to note that we still have a commitment to the tennis project out of this particular fund of $107,000 for the, the renovation and the concession stand. We have another commitment of 600,000 that'll come out of that Special Parks Reserve Fund to that tennis project. The next slide 32 is gas tax. You can see that those revenues went down in 2020, but have rebounded very quickly in 2021. This is spent only on streets and, and any transportation type projects. So that fund is very healthy at this point. We did, we did see a growth in, in our comparison of budget to actual revenue collection in that particular fund.
One thing of note to there, there is that is levied per gallon, not as a percentage of the, the sales. So as gas prices increase, that doesn't cause our revenue to increase. And if it causes people to travel less and consume fewer gallons of gas, it'll actually cause our revenue to go down.
What is the rate we receive on a gallon of gas?
I don't remember exactly what the number.
Isn't it a per capita distribution of state collection? So I've, I've not heard it expressed in a, at a city level per gallon.
I can certainly look it up. I'm sure it's somewhere.
I just seen on the way down here, I drove my, my car today and takes premium and it's $4.34 a gallon.
Yeah. It's not based on that price. Like Mike said, it's based on the number of gallons that are sold. So we won't see that increase from that perspective.
If it changes driving habits, I think it'll cause our revenue to go down.
It'll cause a problem because people spend, will buy less gas.
Yeah, it will.
True. I'm not going to go through any of the rest of these funds. I'll skip back to page, to slide 38 because this is a hot topic. We've, we've spent a lot of time, effort and promotion into our downtown redevelopment. So I wanted to provide the performance on the Starbond District. In this, in this first slide, this is 2021 results. As you can see, we did collect well in, in advance of our base for all three categories. We collected a little over 80, about 83% of what our projection was. When we went into the Starbond project, we had an outside party do a revenue projection study based to, to determine what they thought these projects would bring in revenue. And so that projection is what we're basing this on. It was a preliminary projection based on whatever those economy people do to say, say what they thought those projects would produce as far as state sales tax, city sales tax, and transient guest tax. As you recall, some of the projects had some delays. So this, this is our third year, 2021 would be our third year. However, not all the projects were completely open until midway through 2021. So we did reach a little over 80% on state sales tax compared to projections. We were at 88% of local sales tax and 68% of transient guest tax. So yeah. But then the next slide that I provided, I wanted to show you what we're doing in 2022. And if we compare January and February of 2021 to February and February of 2022, and in February of 2021, we had collected 28% of the base that we had to collect before the district started collecting money. And in February of 2022, we're already at 34%. Same with the local sales tax, we're at 40, almost 47% in 2022 in February. In February of 2021, we were only at 34%. And transient guest tax, we're at 26% in February. And in Feb, February of 2021, we were only at 10%. So you can see the numbers are going up. They're, they're growing slightly, which is a positive sign. I think that's what's important, that we, we kind of look at those numbers going up.
Can you remind me who the benefit beneficiaries are of the Starbond projects? The district?
Yes.
Sorry, it's in front of my mouth, but the microphone's not on. And then on the Starbond side, that was debt financing that went into reimbursing us for the, the, our expenses on the field house. Some of that went to the Stiefel, some of that went to the car museum, some of that went to the downtown streetscape improvements, not just the roadway, but the overhead structures in Campbell Plaza. There's a graphic that.
I didn't put that particular one on, but there is a graphic.
Similar to the graphic on.
The city was a, a little over $10 million. The, the car museum was $4.5 million. And then there were some littler ones for some of the other projects that were within there from the Starbond funding. Does that make? And I can provide you that because we do have the same graphic. The next slide that shows kind of the other districts that are within the Starbonds. So we have kind of many things going down. We have the Starbonds, which we, which were monies that were borrowed to pay for this redevelopment and are being paid back from sales tax collections in that district. And then we have a downtown TIF, which is supporting a little bit of the hotel. We have an apartment fund that if we ever have an economic development for apartments downtown, we've got some money set aside for that. Old Chicago is receiving a little bit of TIF money. And then we have a, a portion that's going to new businesses that they can apply for funding out of the TIF fund. We estimated that that collection over a 20-year period would be about $4.9 million. To date, through the end of 2021, we've collected $1.5 million. The downtown then has some community improvement development districts, which is an additional sales tax on top of what we are paying for normal sales tax. So for downtown, there's a 1% downtown CID, which goes to pay for security and maintenance downtown through S D I. Old Chicago, part of their development agreement was to get a little bit of 50,000 of that. We have a new retail improvement category class in there that new retailers that come in, for example, Grassroots or Barilla Grill, the Bath. in, for example, Grassroots or Barola Grill, The Bath Pub, those have all applied and have been approved for some of that funding. And then we have existing retailers. So if we have existing retailers that want to do improvements, they can apply for funding out of that CID. That, we estimated, would, would generate about $7.6 million over the 20-year period, and it's generated about $632,000 since 20, through the end of 2021. And then, as Mike said, the hotel itself has an additional 1% sales tax that goes strictly back to the development of the hotel. And then the alley has a 1% sales tax that goes directly to the development of the, the alley. And I show kind of there where they've collected through, through, through the end of 2021. The thing to remember on this is this is all pay-as-you-go. So none of these entities get money until we collect it or if we collect it. It's all based on their own performance. So they're basically just, whatever they put into it and get out of it, they, they get reimbursed for that. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, if I could add a little bit, and that, I was going to make that same point on the pay-as-you-go aspect of it, including the transfer agreements that we enter into with individual businesses, those are all structured as pay-as-you-go as well. The, the Starbonds was a debt issuance, and the projections that Debbie mentioned earlier were, were very vital to taking that to the bond market. And so they were issued in senior and subordinate bonds. About $4.5 million of that was issued as subordinate bonds. The buyers of that, of those bonds are essentially in second position. If the revenue isn't there, they, they don't get paid. There is a provision, if we ever do catch up, they get paid back with interest, but they're at, they're at risk of, if the project underperforms, not having those bonds paid off. And then the actual structure of that debt includes an amortization schedule that recognizes we're, we're going to grow into kind of performance over the 20, 23 years. And then it also includes a debt service reserve. So there were some funds set aside on the front end, which is not uncommon for bond issues, that are, that is there if funds aren't otherwise available to make some of those initial bond payments. So Debbie's done some projections of where we're at today and what we would, and what our performance would need to be to, from where we are to the remainder of that bond schedule in terms of growth. And we've talked about kind of how that's calculated, but I guess the takeaway there is, it's not, it's within kind of the performance that we're seeing. We, we may have been off to a slow start, but there's enough indicators that it's not unreasonable to think that the growth over the remaining years could position us to be able to make all the remaining payments.
Yeah, I basically took what we collected in 2021, which was really probably one of our first full years, and calculated out what we would need to pay off all the debt payments that we were required to make with interest through the end of the, through 2036. And in order to pay the senior bonds, it was a 0.6% growth rate that we would have to achieve from 2021. And then in order to pay the entire bond package with the, no, that was the senior bonds, with the subordinate bonds, that growth rate would have to be about 1.8%. And even our sales tax outside of these unusual things we're seeing now are averaging anywhere between 1.5 and 2.5% growth. So that's a little comforting.
I would tell you, the master developer remains active. We're continuing to see investment in interest in, you know, filling additional storefronts and continuing to fulfill that, that vision. So all indications are we're headed in the right direction.
Okay. We need to wrap up in 90 seconds.
Nope, I'm ready for questions. Comments, questions, any follow-up information you might want.
Ms. Pack will be available right down here in the, and we will be back at 4 o'clock. All right, it is a little after 4 o'clock. We'll get started on the March 14th, 2022 Salina City Commission Meeting. Ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you, and proceed with roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz. Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
All right, we have some honored guests here in the room, some scouts. I'm going to ask them to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They didn't know they were going to do this, but. Thank you. And we should give your troop proper notice. Which troop, one of you want to come up to the microphone real fast?
Troop 5.
Troop 5, and that's located where?
University United Methodist Church.
All right, thank you. It's good to see scouting is alive and well. Thank you. We do not have any words and proclamations or public hearing, so we can proceed directly to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of March 7, 2022. 5.2, authorize the fire department to purchase the following from Osage Ambulance via Emergency Services Supply, the authorized Osage ambulance sales vendor for Kansas. One, new 2022 Ram 4500 four-by-four ambulance chassis. Two, complete refurbishment and remounting of the ambulance patient module from an existing Salina Fire Department ambulance to the new Ram 4500 ambulance chassis. And three, one Stryker Power Pro Power EMS patient cot. 5.3, award the bid for project number 22014, 2022 Microsurfacing to Vance Brothers, Inc. of Kansas City, Missouri, in the amount of $850,669.82, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $893,203.31, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Vance Brothers, Inc. of Kansas City, Missouri, upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Yep, it was a mouthful. Thank you. Any item the commission would like removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor Davis, I'd like to remove item 5.2, please.
5.2. Any others? Is there a motion to act on 5.1 and 5.3?
Mayor, I move we approve items 5.1 and 5.3.
Second? Moved in second to approve items 5.1 and 5.3 of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. I didn't mention that Commissioner Lenkowitz is not here today, if you.
Correct, he, he.
Wonder why there's an empty seat here.
Let us know that he wouldn't be here today.
Okay. All right, item 5.2 is, yeah, Mr. Pearson.
I'll defer to Commissioner Hoppeck, whether you like the staff reporter, whether you have a question.
Yeah, I have a question. I, I have no problem with the, with the purchase. My question may be as much for Ms. Pack. He knows, it's okay, good.
I don't know if I'd go that far, but.
Okay. As we were looking at this, it made me think that, you know, we do quite a few, at one point, we were doing quite a few transfers, whether it's to Wichita, Kansas City, wherever. And with the cost of gas and, and the overtime being paid, I was curious as to how we felt like our reimbursement, you know, our charges were, because at one point, were we tying that into reimbursement from like Medicare or Medicaid?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that we're, and Debbie may have a better explanation, but essentially, we're, we are a contracted participating provider for CMS, which is the Center for Medicaid Services, as well as Blue Cross and most other insurance companies, as far as private insurers, insurance payers are concerned. So with that, we're essentially, as a contracted provider, essentially obligated to accept what they are willing to pay for those services based on geographic location, things of that nature. So we could increase the rates, but would probably have very little impact on, on that because we're only going to be able to accept what they're willing to pay as it is, based on the, the nature of that call, whether it's a, a basic life support, interfacility transport, which is a, a lower base rate, advanced life support's a little bit more, or if it's a critical care type transfer, then we get to bill an additional fee that typically gets paid by Medicare or Blue Cross, which is our primary private insurance that, that we participate with. So we can, we could bill a little bit more, but that balance is not something that we could collect over and above what, what CMS or Blue Cross.
So if you have a, a contracted rate with Blue Cross Blue Shield, let's say, and I'm, I have to be transported to Wichita, there's a, there's a specific rate that you're paid.
A maximum allowable.
Okay.
That they will pay, yes.
Okay.
And our rates are pretty.
But if I, but if I go to the doctor and I have a rate that they'll pay, because they have that, that negotiated rate, and then I get billed for the difference, can you not do that on transporta, on transports either?
I don't believe so. And that's kind of where we've always been, and we, and we could look into that further, but historically, we have not done that.
Okay. And I'm just curious, is there negotiated rate with, obviously with, with gas prices increasing and overtime, it seems like the, you know, the taxpayers being asked to pay a percentage of that, that maybe they should, you know, should be passed on to the consumer, so.
Sure. Certainly something we can look into further, and, and we'll certainly do that as quick as possible to see what, but I, I, I believe the biggest reason that we don't is because the, being that participating provider, that we're pretty much obligated to accept what they pay for that service at this point.
Just clear one little thing, for the physician, if they are contracted, their maximum that they can receive is that contracted allowable rate. Now Medicare, for example, only pays 80% of it, so they can bill that 20%, but.
And some of those things that may be looking at are co-pays for your insurance company that, you know, we're, same way with the city, city insurance, and we could have to pay a certain percentage of that until we meet a certain amount, then it would be paid at 100% of what was charged versus what the actual bill could be.
So are those rates set once a year then?
No, not once a year. I don't know how often they adjust those, to be honest with you. Our, our rates don't change often. We usually, and the finance department does an outstanding job with keeping up with that rate schedule adjustment and adjusting our rates as, as things change and.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. I will say that the MS administrator that we have. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. I will say that the MS administrator that we have keeps track of what those numbers are, and she will notify us, and in fact, I have a notification right now for those rates. As anytime those change through any of those providers, she will load, notify us, and we will increase them on the, the rate schedule. The last time we increased them was in 2020, so.
Again, no, no problem with the proposal. I just was.
Sure.
Curious to discuss a little bit about the reimbursement for transfers that would help pay for some of this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not on the proposal.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, do you like to move us along with the motion?
Yeah. Mayor Davis, I move we approve consent agenda item 5.2.
Second? I moved and seconded to approve consent agenda item 5.2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries four to nothing, and we will move to administration.
Item 6.1, debt financing options discussion.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. As you recall, annually, we come before you with some debt financing, sometimes twice a year if we're doing a refunding. But typically, what we do with a project is, the project's approved, and we start, we begin that project. In the first year, what we'll do as far as supporting that from a financial perspective is we'll issue temporary notes for one year. And then we'll, once the, the project is completed, assuming it's done within that one year, the following year, we'll issue general obligation bonds, and we'll pay off the temporary notes, and then we'll pay the debt service for whatever the life of that particular project is. With the cities, we, we currently have three projects that we would normally have intended to issue temporary notes for in 2022. That's the fire station design of $500,000, the sanitation truck building at $375,000, and then the baseball improvements at Bill Burke at $2.5 million. With the city currently having cash funding available in their, in their funds, we looked at these numbers, and we tried to figure out, is there a way for us to avoid that temporary note financing, and avoid the interest that we would pay on those? So we took a look at what our cash availability was, and we've noted that the city currently has what we call a sweep account, which is an overnight sweep, that any remaining funds in our checking account go into a savings account overnight. We get paid a, a small amount of interest on that fund, and then it goes back to the fund when we need to pay out bills the next day. We currently have about $60 million in that fund, and typically, what we would do with those funds is we would either invest them to get a little bit more interest in those, or in this case, we're, we're, we're making the consideration of using those funds to, to cash finance these for the next year until we debt finance them. The calculations that we figured out is we would, we would pay approximately $68,000 in interest if we issued temporary notes for one year on these projects. We would collect about $675 in interest off the sweep account for that amount of money. So in effect, we could save ourselves about $67,000 over the course of the next year. Since this was an unusual perspective in the way we, we normally fund our projects, we wanted to bring this before you to give you the option and give us the direction, whether you thought that was a, a good fiscal management of, of using these funds. So at this point, we don't really have any action. We're just asking that you give us direction. If you believe this is a good, a good direction for us to take, then we will bring forward to you next week, as part of our annual financing, we'll bring forward the projects that we will be debt financing with Geo, with general obligation bonds, but you'll see no temporary notes on there. The other option is, we can move forward as normal, do temporary notes, and move forward that way. But we wanted to give you that option since we, we felt like we had the availability of the cash on hand at this point to kind of carry these projects through to their, their debt financing next year. So if you have any questions, and I do have Dave Artiber, our financial advisor, on the line, if you have any questions from that perspective, we'd be glad to answer them.
Before the questions, could you explain that we do not have $60 million in cash that we can spend on anything?
No, that money is not all dedicated just specifically for open spending. There's, there are obviously commitments with that funding. They're in different utility funds and, and grant funds and things like that. So we, it's not like we just have it to spend, no.
Just wanted to get that out loud, okay?
As we mentioned earlier, the general fund we showed had $18 million.
That was my question. I could see my telephone ring. Is part of that $60 million, the, any of the shilling remediation dollars?
No, it's not. We have segregated that out into its own overnight sweep type fund, so no, it does not include that, those funds.
I didn't think we were commingling those, but I wanted to make sure, so, okay.
Any questions, comments?
Oh, no questions. Comment, I agree with the staff's recommendation to use the sweep. On that $60 million, that, that .02%, that's the best you can do?
That's what we receive in an overnight. If we would go out to invest, I just did a current investment for a two-year investment, and I was quoted .95%. We could probably get one-ish percent. For one year, it's probably less than that one, .95%, because the rates are just so low right now. But if we did, we went out and invested it, we could certainly get more than .02%, but we wouldn't.
And if, if you were doing bonds on this project, what would that rate be?
The temporary notes are usually, I'll look to Dave to answer if I'm incorrect, but they usually come in around, I think the last one we had was about 2% is what we pay on general obligation bonds and notes.
I think it's a good idea to pay cash.
And Commissioners, you may recall, and it might be worthwhile for Ms. Pack to elaborate a little bit, we recently went through a cash and investment management policy submitted to the state with the intent of securing additional authority, which may give us the opportunity to earn a little bit better rate of return. So you might update them on the response to that and where we're heading.
We did, state statute only allows municipalities to invest their funds for a period of two years. There is a way, what they call an expanded powers authority that you can request. You have to go through an application process with the Kansas Municipal Investment Board. We did submit that application in early 2022, and we were approved. So at this point, we can take our investments now, instead of going out two years, which, if you know how interest rates work, the longer you can invest, the more, the higher interest rate you can typically receive. But we can now go out and invest our funds for four years. And we did, we did a lot of that because we wanted to be able to invest the shilling money to be able to maximize the interest that we could receive on those particular funds, but also on our own funds.
All right.
Any questions?
Sounds like there's a consensus that this is a good idea.
Pretty some easy decision, I think.
Okay, so next week, we'll bring that forward to you for the general obligation bonds, but we will not submit these for temporary notes. Thank you.
Thank you. 6.2.
Item 6.2, authorize the acceptance and placement of the 2021 People's Choice Sculpture on public property.
Mr. Anderson, how you doing?
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity, whether I hope is one of your easiest decisions of the week, if not the month. As outlined in, in the summary report of the blue sheet, since 2011, the City of Salina has agreed to purchase the People's Choice, the, the voting that takes place from May 1st until the end of the calendar year each year, to indicate their favorite of the multiple pieces that are available or on public display downtown as part of Sculpture Tour Salina, which I, I should say at the front end, or just as a reminder, especially for our new commissioner, this is not a Salina Arts and Humanities project. It's a privately managed and organized project that we advise on and help where possible, and certainly make the, the recommendation that's before you today, when the work becomes in the, the part of the public collection, but we are, we are just a buyer in this case. And so the city agreed with, with this new idea to, to purchase a piece. We, we have, this will be the 12th piece, I believe, that has become part of the, the public collection as far as People's Choice. The city has been able to benefit with about 40 pieces that are visible to the public because of that program, but we've only had to buy about a dozen of them. So this year, the, the piece is, is by a Colorado artist that is depicted right up here on the screen, butterfly tree. It's multiple metals that are also kinetic. There's a slight amount of movement that happens when the wind blows through those. It's about 14 feet tall, and as we are notified after the first of the year by Sculpture Tour of what the People's Choice is, we begin the process of working with representatives from Sculpture Tour, from our Community Art and Design Advisory Committee, the Arts Commission, and if necessary, other city or, or department staff to determine an appropriate location. We looked at a wide range of places before bringing this recommendation to you, including a median out in South Ohio, some, some offset pedestrian kind of linear parks along Ninth Street. We looked at locations in North Salina and, and some other downtown locations as well, and felt like after looking at, at all of those, and with some of the other improvements that are happening around with the building authority and, and the green space between the city-county building and the public library, that, that this recommendation for the south entrance of the Salina Public Library made the most sense. So before you today is, is that recommendation for accepting this into the public collection. And our office will then take care of the signage and the annual care and maintenance, but it will reside on property that is technically owned, it's right on the property line between the building authority and the Salina Public Library. Salina Public Library Board has approved this recommendation, conditional on your acceptance of that, and, and then we'll go through the process of all the paperwork documentation and getting information from the artist on annual care and maintenance prior to its being moved from downtown Salina to, to its new location in April. So with that, I'll stop talking, because you have a lot of this in front of you, and, and see if there are any questions.
Questions?
It is on city property, this location, and not on the?
It's on public property, but it is not city property. The, this, and actually, if you go back to the last one that you just had, at that tree, and which the library's already trimmed back a little bit to accommodate it in hopes that they're going to get a piece there, that concrete slab that is to the, your right of the tree, the edge of that, as I understand it, is the edge of the property line for the library. The tree is, about half the tree is the building authority, and the other half is, is the library's. And so this is, would be on the library's property, but it's a public, publicly available space and, and fully accessible as well.
It's, it's just a thought that comes to mind, and I'm sure all the parties in this circumstance could work it out, but what if the library wanted to expand in some way, and then you had a piece like that that was in an inconvenient place?
That's, it's a good question, and it's something that we have in the formal agreement that we entered into with the library or with the other facilities. The Temple in downtown Salina have one of our pieces on public display. Kansas Wesleyan has one called Next Up, that was a tennis player that was being damaged in the park that we relocated to a raised pedestal on that campus that is accessible and lit 24 hours a day. And in each of those cases, we have documents that say the City of Salina owns these, we're responsible for the annual care and maintenance, and by mutual agreement of either party, it can be removed at any time. Yeah, I mean, it's not that we have to have their permission, but we would notify them that there's another place. So to your point, if the library decided to move south and, and do an addition, then we would take responsibility for going through this process again of, of making recommendations of a new location, bringing that back to you for approval. And, and likewise, if, if we wanted to initiate that at some point in the future, as an example, the, the tennis player at Wesleyan might have an appropriate place on city property with a new tennis complex that has more protection in the future, that's a consideration. We can make it at any time, so.
Thank you.
I guess. I was curious, how many people participated in the survey?
I don't have that information. We get the final totals, and we sometimes hear, I did hear that a week out, there was a tie between the top two places. It was that close. And if I remember correctly, the total number of votes has ranged from as little, I think in an off-year of maybe right around 1,000 or so, to a few thousand in, at another time. But, but we don't always ask for that exact number.
And does your office have a committee that decides on the placement?
We have a mayor-appointed advisory body called the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee. And that committee, what we'll typically do is have a conversation with the donor of whatever, if it's a private party bringing something and saying, we'd like to gift this to the city, and do you have a place for it? Then we go through the, the Community Art and Design Advisory Committee. Sometimes the staff brings recommendations to them and says, here are some options, and these are all public open meetings. We'll bring options and say, here's three recommendations or four that staff feels like are actionable. Other times, over my 12 years, we've sometimes said, you've got about a month to drive around town and come up with, you know, your best ideas of where you think it ought to go. We have some ideas too, but we'd like to hear from you. So it, it's, it's kind of an inclusive process there, and then once we get a site or two worked out, we look through the application of, of what that means for the community. In this case, the message, I mean, this may be more detailed than you really want, but butterflies, you know, are metamorphosis, a transformational kind of a thing. Transformation takes place at libraries. The library schedules a lot of children's activities on that south lawn and, and outside the window and near where the butterflies are, or would be for the summer, and, and that's a regular programming space for them and a popular access point for those who don't park in front. And, and so that seemed to make a lot of sense and didn't, from an infrastructure standpoint, take as much expense, engineering and, and design to place it, say, in a downtown planter that already has water or, or plants that would have to be relocated. So, so we, we do like where possible to keep the People's Choice, because it's a downtown-centered project that sometimes has had more of, of an emphasis, but we do have sculptures at the soccer complex and Jerry Ivy Park and, and at other, at Oakdale Park. There's about five sculptures over there, but not all from Sculpture Tour.
Well, I guess I was concerned, I didn't realize, I didn't perceive that south of the library was very high traffic as far as people seeing and enjoying it, but you say that it.
That, that entryway, for the folks that, once they fill up those kind of front slots, those, that, that back entrance has been an active place, especially, well, they, the times I frequented and seen a lot of activity as well as, they have a gallery just inside those doors. And so they do, now that, that some of the COVID programming has, has helped, a lot of folks came in and out through that. They'd have kind of a coffee shop gathering space, and it was a, it was a widely utilized space as part of the library, besides the shelves and, and the other spaces, so. I don't have the exact counts, you know, of where that is, but I know that with some of the remodeling that's likely to be taking place for the building authority with the rest of the grounds, it will be a nice complement to the Trifinity sculpture that is, that centered in the, in the Caldwell Plaza right now.
And there's a piece right in front of this building.
Yes, there is. That was People's Choice from two years ago, I believe, and, and so it, it does utilize this common ground or area for a place to interrupt our lives with some art.
Right. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public?
I got one more question, Brad.
Okay.
Do you have any numbers on how many of the sculptures have been purchased privately? Do you have any numbers on how many of the sculptures have been purchased privately, or any?
Yeah. The 40 that I gave reference to, and Commissioner Hoppe probably has the most knowledge directly for that program, but if I did a quick estimate, I believe about 15, almost 20 of the 40 that were referenced are in the public collection. Some came through an early Sculpture Tour workshop where the artists left their pieces for the community. A couple others have been donated. And then some have been additional and outside sales. There's two at the soccer complex that are part of the public collection now, but those were privately donated. And so.
I'm talking about from this round of 2021.
Oh. I think that it's still early for that because typically they can't sell a piece until the people have voted. So none of the pieces can be sold or sale finalized until the public has voted.
When are they scheduled to come down?
They are coming down beginning in about mid-April and then up to the weekend that the shift takes place. Some artists come, take their piece off of a pedestal, a new piece goes on, and then they take the other one home if it hasn't been sold. So there's a committee that works privately. I just met with some of them last week. And I should also say, normally, you would hear at this time from Joan Benefield, she's our visual arts specialist, our public arts specialist. She's out of town and has zoomed in in case you ask too hard of a question that I need to go to the people who really know, but she is online and available as well.
Yeah, I believe there's 19 pieces this last year, and I can't say there has been for sure one other piece sold that will stay in the community.
Yeah.
Just because it hasn't come down yet, I'm not going to say who it is, but they have entered into a contract to purchase a piece and put in front of their building. So.
It's really a wonderful thing to have the private sector step up and share in helping fulfill our mission of, you know, interrupting life with some art. And when the private sector takes the ownership and responsibility to do that, it makes the community better. So.
And we do have a piece in the basement of the children's library also. If you ever go down there with grandkids or anything or kids, there's a, and just to give you an idea of how this kind of works with the public, we had approached a local business to purchase it, and it worked out just so that we moved it to each elementary school for a year. So it was in each elementary school for a month before it went to the library on a permanent basis. So again, just exposing the elementary kids to art, and it was kind of a fun deal. It's called Egg Side, or is that right? Excited, yeah.
Excited.
It's a, it's a, looks like a Humpty Dumpty egg with a lot of books and stuff. It's kind of a neat piece, and it looks really good at the library. So we've had a lot of businesses step up and purchase pieces to put throughout the community.
What's that? I wonder where that one went. That was my favorite one of all. Okay, now I know. All right. You gotta go to the children's library a little more. All right. Any comments, questions from the public?
Ben, when holds Salina, could you bring back up the picture of the site where this is going to be located? Is this a, and I don't know who can tell me this, is this an existing pad that has been there for a time, or is this ported new for this project? And if it is an existing pad, what was on it before?
Yes, the building authority helped investigate that. There was a bench on that pad, and the bench aged out, and they had it taken away, determined it wasn't necessary. And I think it was working more as a smoking lounge near the entrance, and they weren't going to promote that. The pad is at or just a little more than six inches thick, which is comparable to the sidewalks and the locations of where it is and should more than adequately support the sculpture. So it does save us some money in acquisition and pouring of additional concrete. So the library has agreed for that to be utilized. We had chosen or recommended at first two other locations in the front of the building, but they said, we'd really like to have something here. We're developing this space. We utilize it for programming. We don't utilize the front of the library for programming, and we think it'd be seen more from our windows and doors if it was at that location. So the general consensus is, is that the existing pad will work well for supporting the sculpture.
All right. Thank you. Okay, any hands raised? No, all right. Bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move acceptance of the 2021 People's Choice Sculpture Beautiful Butterfly Tree, item 04, into the public collection for placement on public property near the south entrance of the Salina Public Library.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the 2021 People's Choice Sculpture and place it as described. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Thank you. And we will move to item 6.3.
Item 6.3 Petty Cash and Working Cash Funds. 6.3a, approve ordinance number 22-11101 on second reading, amending Article 13, Sections 2, 240 and 2241 of the City of Salina Code pertaining to petty cash and working cash funds. 6.3b, approve resolution number 22-8026, amending and restating the authorization for establishing and maintaining petty cash and working cash funds for departments of the city of Salina.
This back.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. This is a follow-up item to last week's action where we had the first reading of ordinance 221101. As I stated last week, according to state statute, the city is required to have petty cash and working cash funds established for the utility fund via ordinance. However, statute allows that the city can authorize and establish petty cash and working cash funds for any other funds via resolution. So our recommendation was to pull, and the city had originally put those all in ordinance. So the staff had recommended that we pull all of the funds, the petty cash and working cash funds, for all funds except for the utility fund out of the ordinance and establish those via resolution. So tonight's reading is the second reading of that ordinance, which would establish only the utility fund in the ordinance in Article 13, Section 2, 240 and 241 of the Salina Code. And the resolution that's attached would establish all other funds petty cash. This action item was brought forward because we had one department, the solid waste landfill, that had some changes in their fund, in their fees, that have caused them to have some operating issues. They're not able to provide change for the fees that were established, so their staff's having to go to the bank quite regularly to get change. And so they had requested to have their working cash fund increased by $100. Since we were doing this, I reached out to other departments to see if there was any other departments that felt like they had a need for this. Development Services asked that they have their petty cash fund increased, which was originally set at $400, to have theirs increased by $200, because they too use that fund to register multiple registrations with the Register of Deeds. And in the summer, when they're quite busy, they don't want to prolong the processes that people are having, going through Development Services just by having to go issue a check or go get cash to pay for those fees. So the actions before you today are approve ordinance 2211101 on second reading. You could approve that with amendments. You could postpone, or you could vote to deny this on second reading. The second action item is to approve resolution 228026, increasing, establishing the funds for all other petty cash and working funds, and increasing the working cash fund for landfill by $100, from 300 to 400, and increasing the petty cash fund for Development Services by $200 from 400 to 600. You could approve that resolution with any amendments you deem appropriate, postpone consideration, and give us instruction on further information you would like, or vote to deny the resolution, which would leave all funds or leave those working cash funds, and we'd have to establish those other funds separately through another resolution. Staff recommends option one in both situations. And I'd be open for any questions.
Questions this end? All right, any questions from the public, comments? All right, bring it back to action on 6.3a.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve ordinance number 22-11101 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-11101 on second reading. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoppe.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. Passes four to zero. And any action on 6.3?
Mayor Davis, I move we approve resolution number 22-8026, increasing the working cash funds for the landfill by $100 from 300 to 400, and Development Services by $200 from 400 to 600, and setting all other funds as previously established.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 22-8026. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. And we will move to 6.4.
Item 6.4, award the bid for project number 22006, 2022 Sidewalk Ramps and Parking Lot Repairs to Davis Concrete Construction of Salina in the amount of $99,185, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $104,144.25, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Davis Concrete Construction of Salina upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
All right, Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This project is kind of an annual, I would look signing project, but Mike wanted me to talk about it a little bit with the city manager, and we talked about it a little bit with, about in regards to our overall sidewalk, new sidewalk program.
Mr. Stack, just a second.
Sorry, is that better? Yes.
Okay, they can hear you now.
All right. Okay, this project is our annual sidewalk ramps program, as well as some parking lot repairs, trying to bid projects, kind of grouping them together, 100,000, $200,000 projects helps us to get, we've got better bids, it's hard to get bids, and we did get two on this. So instead of a smaller just ramps project or a smaller just project or parking lot project, we combine them for that reason. So the parking lot is on Fifth Street. First Bank Kansas really has the most interest there because they have their own parking lot kind of in the middle of our, have three parking lots there. It's kind of odd. Okay, you got, that's a great picture. Thank you, Jacob. There's five driveways. We're looking at Fifth Street just north of Homewood Suites and south of the kind of Salina Blue building there. So we basically just have to do one of those at a time and try to keep access kind of through the alley and through First Bank Kansas as we're doing those driveways. So it's mostly driveways, parking lot per se, but it's the driveways, the curbs, and the sidewalks kind of through those driveways are in pretty poor condition. So we have coordinated with First Bank Kansas to do that, and contractor has to phase that appropriately. That's really all the excitement on that one. Okay, go back up to the top there. Okay, and then our sidewalk ramps are kind of in a part of town there, just south of Crawford, west of Ninth Street a little bit, as well as a few up on Ruskin, and then one at Billburg Park. And just kind of how our ramps projects work, we have to follow around or try to keep up with our maintenance program. So if we do maintain a street with a mill and overlay or some repairs, then the requirements to put an ADA accessible ramp kind of kick in. So you have to, those really dictate where we end up working on those. So if we're doing maintenance on these streets, that's, we overlaid Ruskin and Regent last year, so that's why that, just an example of why we're doing those. And we have a couple hundred, about 300 left in the city to kind of do if we, we have kind of an ongoing list of our ramps that we have to upgrade. So we're making little progress each year. The last thing to talk about on this, with this blue sheet, is yeah, we're in the process of trying to work through property owner concerns for putting sidewalks, new sidewalks, in some of our areas of town. We came to you last October with a study session about new sidewalks. And so Mike wanted me to mention that we are trying to get that forward for you all. We're having a, we'll have a public meeting on one of them to try to address some concerns on the Ray Avenue sidewalk here coming up in a few weeks. Most of the rest of them, we've been able to kind of address sidewalk property concerns. You know, it's basically trying to avoid trees and landscaping and make sure we replace sprinkler systems and that kind of stuff. So we're able to, most of the time, get through, get people to be okay with a sidewalk in their front yard. And it is not easy, because I'd say, you know, everybody wants a sidewalk in their front yard, they haven't had one before, and not always interested in having one now. So it does bring some, you know, some maintenance, and it's just some things that they're not as interested in. But we've been able to, have a few people who are excited about it, next to schools and kids walking, that is the goal, to try to get sidewalks where we're around schools. And definitely Ray Avenue is one that's around a school, but we have a petition that's, they signed to try not to have the sidewalk there. So we're trying to address those concerns and going to have a public meeting with them. So is that good, Mike? Is it?
Commissioners, you may recall, we've segregated some street funds, about $200,000 annually was your goal, to commit beyond just the sidewalk ramps that Mr. Stack had described, and do sidewalk connections. We've got a number of locations where sidewalks start and stop, and we have points that are not connected. So the study session that Dan referenced was kind of us walking through the methodology of how we'd reviewed all of our gaps and how we were going to prioritize them and bring them back. So separate and distinct from this action item, you'll be getting a action item on more sidewalks in the near future.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Stack.
On this end.
Thank you.
All right, any questions, comments from the public? All right, any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move that we award the bid for project number 22006, 2022 Sidewalk Ramps and Parking Lots Repair to Davis Concrete Construction of Salina in the amount of $99,185,000, with a 4,959, 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $104,144.25, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Davis Concrete Construction of Salina upon fulfillment of the prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to award the bid for project number 22006. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And we will now move to item 6.5.
Item 6.5, approve ordinance number 22-11104 on second reading, amending Section 42-415.2 of the zoning ordinance to add travel center and/or truck stop, short-term recreational vehicle parking area, accessory to hotel, motel, truck stop, or travel plaza, and mini warehouses to the list of conditional uses allowed in the South Ninth Street Corridor Overlay District.
All right. Commissioner. Mr., just had the clerk's name on it, but I.
Dean Andrew.
Yeah, okay.
We've got kind of a couple things going on. I think Mr. Andrew can kind of remind you of the item that's before you. I think we do need to discuss the number of votes required and determine, given this governing body, how many are going to be participating, and then we can figure out a course going forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. This is coming to you on second reading for consideration. At your last meeting, you approved a zoning text amendment by a vote of four to zero on first reading. And when you were doing that, the governing body was overriding the recommendation of the planning com- doing that, the governing body was overriding the recommendation of the planning commission, which was to not include mini warehouses. The state statute that deals with zoning district amendments requires that in order to override a planning commission's recommendation, that requires a two-thirds majority vote of the membership of the governing body, and so it's not two-thirds of those present in voting, but two-thirds of the full membership of five, which in the case of the governing body, is four affirmative votes. So in order to pass this on second reading this afternoon, there would need to be four affirmative votes for that. If there are not four commissioners participating, our recommendation would be to postpone this to your March 21st meeting, to allow it be considered by the full membership, since the statute does anticipate that the vote would be based on the membership of the governing body, and not just those attending and, and voting. So in order for this to be approved on second reading this afternoon, there would need to be a motion, a second, and four affirmative votes for approval of this text amendment on second reading, which includes the addition of mini warehouses.
All right, I guess we'll, we'll address that. I recused myself last time, as there was two action items that dealt with this. In consultation with council and with city staff, we at one point thought maybe there'd be an opportunity for me to vote on this because of the generic means, or the fact that it covered more ground than the, than the piece of ground that was looking to be rezoned. After reviewing the contract, the contract does state specific things that need to happen in order for that contract to be valid, so I believe at this point, I should continue to recuse myself. With that being done, there's not four commissioners available to vote on it, so I believe that would look at city staff, that this should be possibly moved to a date certain, I looked to city staff or legal counsel on that.
Yeah, that was, as long as, as long as we think that we'll have the full membership at that meeting, so if it's anticipated the full membership of five would be at the March 21st meeting, then our recommendation would be to make a motion to postpone this to March 21st meeting, to allow it to be considered by the full membership of the governing body.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Mayor, I'll move that we postpone ordinance number 22-11104 to March 21st.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone item 6.5 to March 21st, 2022. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
This will appear on your next agenda, thank you.
We are now going to go to other business, and I'm going to turn the floor over to our city manager.
We, as you know, by way of a press release and email from me, there's been some recent developments related to SkyWest, and, and their service in the community, and Tim Rogers, the executive director of the Airport Authority's here, I think has some additional updates that he might be able to provide you, and the terminology is a hold-in order, which was something that was discussed, but I think Tim's prepared to tell you a little bit more about that, and then answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Rogers.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, and Mike, thanks. Want to again thank city manager Mike Skreg, and deputy city manager Jacob Wood, they've been very helpful, and in following a lot of emails back and forth in, in the last few days. I'll first talk about some dates that, that affect the, where air service, scheduled air service is heading, and kind of looking back on March 10th, SkyWest Airlines issued a notice to terminate, this is a notice to the U.S. Department of Transportation, to terminate essential air service that is, that is provided under a contract between SkyWest Airlines and the U.S. Department of Transportation, to terminate service at Salina and 28 other communities. I think it's important to note that the notice determination in the comments in the notice SkyWest mentioned, it is not due to any failure, or any issues with any of the communities. In fact, this week, for example, last week Salina was at 77% load factor, it is not a, for Salina, it's not an issue of low ridership or non-use, in fact, we're one of their top 10 performers, one of SkyWest's top 10 performers, in their essential air service program portfolio. It is an issue of pilot shortage. Through this termination of 29 communities, SkyWest, over time, makes available well over 300 pilots that can be used for other flying and other demands that they have, that they, in contracts that they have in place with American Airlines, United Airlines, Delta Airlines, and Alaska Airlines. Kind of put the national pilot shortage in perspective, too, United Airlines is only able to train about 600 pilots, 60 pilots, 60 or 70 pilots per month, they need to be training 300 pilots per month, as the system recovers, and demand recovers. So the notice was delivered to terminate, a 90-day notice of termination on March 10th. The U.S. Department of Transportation responded very quickly, and Friday afternoon, late March 11th, the USDOT issued an order prohibiting termination of service and requesting proposals. So what this order by the USDOT means, that SkyWest Airlines is prohibited from terminating service until a replacement air carrier is in place, not selected, but in place. The key date in the order is that the USDOT has requested proposals from interested air carriers to be submitted to the USDOT by April 11th of 2022. At that point in time, those proposals will be made publicly available, be posted on the, on the USDOT's, on a federal website called www regulations.gov, will be made available to the community, and the community will have, in this case, a short window of time to evaluate and comment on their proposals received. It is the community's, community's comments that may very well, that can have an impact, and DOT is looking for, as they arrive at a selection of an air carrier to replace SkyWest Airlines providing the United Express service. In any event, if that selection is made, say, in, by late May, early June, it, there is, doesn't happen literally within days that a replacement carrier can take place, that carrier needs to have aircraft and crew in place, so it could take a couple months, three months, to have that replacement air carrier in place. So getting back to the, the order that was issued Friday afternoon, the department, this is a quote, "The department will require SkyWest, SkyWest to continue to maintain the level of service required in this day, in this case, the service we have already to Denver and Chicago, for additional 30-day periods until a replacement air carrier commences full EAS service at the community, in the community." So there is, every effort's being made to make sure that, that there's no disruption in service, there will most likely be a change in air carrier. I doubt SkyWest decides in the next 30 days that they're going to rebid one or all these 29 markets. In today's environment of, you never know what's going to happen within sometimes the next 24 hours, what, what may or may not happen, but I suspect we'll have a couple, we'll have a new, one or two new proposals. Within 24 hours of the initial kind of word on the street of the termination, that word on the street got out, within the industry, the Salina Airport Authorities, and thus the community's air service consultant, Gary Foss, with the Arcstar Group, had contact and inquiries from two interested air carriers within 24 hours. So I hold that out as an indication that, that there is interest in the Salina market, it is seen as a very viable market, and again, the, the presentation that will be made to the interested air carriers will clearly communicate this community's vibrant economic growth that's occurring, and, and the fact we can put, we can sell out, we can sell all the seats on the, on the jet, as happened today, and is happening over this week, and especially during spring break at times. Would like to also let the commission, and those on attendance and viewing the meeting today, that the Kansas congressional delegation is very engaged in this project, in this issue. Senator Moran, Sir Marshall, Congressman Bannon are all working on a joint letter, in addition to coordinating with other members of Congress from the other communities, other states, to make sure, and to assure, and, and really work with DOT, that DOT follows through on the enforcement aspect, this of holding SkyWest in until a replacement carrier is, replacement carrier is ready to initiate service and start service. So we have the support from our congressional delegation, governor's office is also engaged in working on this issue also. Be glad to answer any questions that Commissioners may have.
Does an alternate proposal have to be for the same group of markets, the 29 that SkyWest is leaving? Or can they divide that up?
Oh, it could be, you know, I mean, I mean, I, it could be, somebody could come in and bid on all 29, but I doubt that would be the case for, to a proposal, so it's going to be multiple options, it's going to be, I'm going to, we'll probably see, in each community may have a different type of proposal. One carrier may come in and select certain communities within a geographic region that they want to serve, because this is all over, this is the Midwest, the South, the East, the Upper Great Lakes area, the Far East, Upper New York, so it's, it's quite, quite a diverse group of communities, so I think it'll be a number of different types of proposals that come in, in the next, you know, 30 days or so.
Thank you.
When they submit a proposal, they're going to, are they going to submit what they got available, what they could do, or would it be for the routes that you currently have?
Well, it could, it could be a different type of hub. The, the level of service that Salina has now is to, we're fortunate to have two viable hubs. The service started out five, six years ago, non-stop flights to Denver, and then SkyWest came in, and we went Denver and Chicago, so any major hub, I think, in geographic area, simple, we're fortunate, we're kind of equidistant from several, is a possibility.
Wouldn't necessarily keep that Chicago flight, it might be Denver, Kansas City.
It will not be Kansas City. Kansas City is not a hub.
Okay.
Kansas City is, is, I'm sorry, is this an airport? It does not provide the connecting service of a, Hub at United, or of a DFW, of a, of a Houston, of a Denver, of a Chicago. It, it, and it's uneconomical to fly between Salina and Kansas City.
Wasn't there another service going to connect with Houston?
Well, SkyWest was looking at, in the possibility of adding Houston, that was over a year ago, we were talking about that, and that's, that's evident, that's very, that's gone away, that's no longer with SkyWest Airlines, and as United Express.
I would tell you that in watching Tim work over the years, between Tim and Gary Foss, they're very knowledgeable of the hubs and the, and the ridership, and we're not just along for the ride, they're out there advocating for us that, hey, here's where our ridership's at, we think you need to be thinking about this route, so, you know, I think we're well positioned as a community to know the process, be engaged, and we'll see what the future brings, but Tim and Gary Foss are certainly advocating for us.
I would second that many times over.
We'll keep city staff, city manager's office apprised, and what's, what's occurring, and it's going to be, the clock is ticking now, it's moving fast, but I am, April 11th, I'm waiting for, you know, that afternoon, that evening, and it'll be the 12th, Tuesday, Tuesday, April 12th, that we really see the proposals, DOT will turn those over right away, and then we'll see, see what's, see what the air carriers, the airlines are thinking about, what they're thinking about.
I do have a couple of questions. We talked about, you know, the, the contract we have is for essential air service, so to follow up on Commissioner Longbine's, so it would not have to be to Denver, to Chicago, it has to be to a primary hub, is that what?
That, that is what the intent is of this, of essential air service, and it goes, so, and it's also, that's, we have our own preferences to, to express, and I think, based upon the level of service we have already, and in some community comments that we will be providing just the interim, we will state, all right, the expectation for Salina is service to, to a major hub.
Then I have two more questions. One is, the replacement carrier would come in and fulfill the remainder of SkyWest's contract, and when does that expire?
Well, it would not, it would be a new contract.
It would be a new contract, it wouldn't just be, okay.
Right, this terminates the SkyWest contract, and then the carrier comes in with a whole new proposal, at a whole new subsidy, at a new subsidy rate, and it would start at a new date.
So it's not just, okay.
That'd be a new two years, most probably. SkyWest has right now one year remaining on their contract.
And I know we're excited to get jets, but the new service could be props, we just don't know.
I, we're going, the level of service that we're expecting, and that is DOT is advocating, our congressional delegation is advocating for the Kansas communities, is the same level of service, and that's with regional jets.
Jets, okay.
Yeah, the coming back, turbo prop service would seem like a step back, but we'll see what the proposals are. The order also goes into detail, and, and states that the replacement carrier, and by federal law, must then take on the obligations of ticketed passengers that were ticketed beyond the date of the replacement carrier. So that carrier will need to come in and make accommodations for those ticketed passengers, SkyWest and United need to work with ticketed passengers that have travel plans for, after the date of a transition, so that, that is part of the, the federal regulations and law involved with handling passengers that have been booked, say, later on the summer, later on the fall.
It would be accurate to say the take-home for a lot of people with plans in the next two months would be to keep those travel plans as they made them, if they're flying in and out of Salina.
Yes, Gary Foss and I visited this morning, and, and, and we are really, and my recommendation to the Airport Authority Board of Directors on Wednesday morning would be to continue our airport promotion, and, and, and because we want to, we want to continue to see, you know, seats being sold, people traveling, and that the commitment is to, you know, be able to continue that travel plans later on in the summer or in the fall, but you're just switching it to another carrier, and maybe going, flying through another hub to make connecting flights.
Thank you very much for going last, giving us information.
Thanks for the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, other business? All right, we will move to the citizens forum, which is an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium, make a comment, question, and Jacob will give you your three minutes on the clock up, up front here.
Ben Winholz, Salina. I'm going to go back to your study session that you had at 3 o'clock today, page 13 on the paper that was given. Back in 2016, we, the citizens of Salina, approved, or were asked to approve, the sales tax increase. With that, that was done by mail-in ballot through your water bill. They had a question and answer sheet that came out with that, and I've pulled it up. Number two on why they're wanting the sales tax was preserving a stable property tax rate, which include the mill levy. All right, mill levy goes up, property taxes go up. So if you go back to page 13, and you look at 2016, the mill levy was 20.000. In 2021, it's almost 24.000. Now my math may not be very good, but that's almost... Now, my math may not be very good, but that's almost a 20% increase in the mill levy from 2016 to 2021. So, were the citizens of Salina smoke and mirrored, basically, to approve the sales tax, thinking that their property tax rates were going to be stabilized? And with almost 20% increase in mill levy, that's not stabilization, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we will...
We do have, we may want to ask about anyone online.
Is there, no one online? Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.